Thank you for viewing this program of the League of Women Voters of Lackawanna County. This morning, we will interview candidates for Lackawanna County Controller and Scranton School Board. These are the candidates that you will find on the ballot for the general election this Tuesday, November 5th. First, we are happy to welcome Gary DeBilio, running as a Democrat for Lackawanna County Controller against a Republican opponent, Mary Noldy, who was unable to be here this morning. The winner of the election will assume the four-year term of Lackawanna County Controller to commence in January 2020. Welcome, Mr. DeBilio.
Thank you for having me, Diana. Appreciate it.
Can you tell the viewers, what are your qualifications for this office?
Well, I've had the privilege of holding the office of County Controller for the past almost eight years. It's an honor to serve as Lackawanna County Controller. I appreciate the opportunity given me by the voters of Lackawanna County. I have a business and financial background, having graduated from Penn State University with a business degree. And having run the office for the past eight years in a way that previous controllers haven't done, I think it qualifies me for continuing to run the office into the future. If you'd like me to continue, we do a lot of, the main thing we do is, obviously, I'm the chief internal auditor for the county. And we help to oversee an over $200 million county budget, which of course consists of taxpayer money. And we've taken an approach that, in addition to doing internal audits of the entire county, we've taken a more aggressive approach of greater overall independent financial oversight. And we've delved into areas that have never been looked at before by the County Controller's Office. I'd like to mention some of them, if you don't mind. First thing we do is annually, we report, we file a report called the Annual Auditing Activity Report. And this is mandated by the Pennsylvania County Code and Lackawanna County Home Rule Charter. This has never been filed before, but it's a synopsis of the entire work that the County Controller's Office does on a year-to-year basis. We file it the past eight years. This is 2018. And anybody can get a copy of this by coming into our office. We're on the second floor of the former Globe Store across the street. They can also call 963-6726, and we'll mail them a copy. And it's also on the county website. Some of the other things that we do that have never been done before would be, in addition to filing the report, we have established the Lackawanna County Fraud, Waste, and Abuse Hotline. And that was in my first year. This is a flyer for the hotline. While it hasn't really uncovered any major fraud, waste, and abuse of Lackawanna County dollars, we'd like to think that it would deter any fraud, waste, and abuse in the future. People can call 963-6600, or write to us at the Controller's Office. They can do that anonymously. And we would then turn it over to the District Attorney's Office for investigation. If the District Attorney would like us to follow up in any way, we'll do that. But we're happy to have put this into existence. In addition to that, I wish I had a little bit of water. But in addition to that, we began auditing delinquent county hotel taxes in 2014. And since then, we've collected almost $600,000 in delinquent hotel taxes. On an ongoing basis, we believe that we're collecting about $100,000 a year more annually than we did before, ever did before. Last year, the hotel tax total was $3.3 million in 2018. We also performed the first-ever county payroll procedure audit, the first-ever purchasing procedure audit, the first-ever county cellular phone review. We did a financial analysis on the county's purchase of the Lackawanna County Government Center at the Globe. We performed a financial review of the county prison. Also, the feasibility and institution of the new GED program at the prison. We regularly check the McDade Park rental and activity receipt reviews, and many other things. First county court reporter procedure review, the first community corrections center audit, first juror account audit, work release audit. And the $200 million budget is very important that we oversee it in a very transparent way.
Yep. Well, thank you for sharing all that. That was a lot of information that is important to citizens of Lackawanna County. In addition to those things that you mentioned, are there some pressing and new problems that you feel will need to be addressed should you be elected?
Yeah, I don't see currently any problems at the county, but it is our job to be completely transparent. The job of a controller, of an internal auditor, is to be transparent. And that's why we look at and account for all of county taxpayer money. We would like to revise the county vehicle policy, which is being done at the city at this time. So we've put that on record with the commissioners, that we'd like to participate in that review of a new county vehicle policy.
Yeah. Thank you. Would you be able to elaborate just a little bit more on your concepts related to ethics and disclosure? We know that that is extremely important to the voters and all citizens of Lackawanna County.
Yeah, that's probably the main reason why we put together the Annual Audit Activity Report, so that we're completely transparent about the work that we do. So all of the work that we do is in this little report, and it's publicly submitted. The Fraud, Waste, and Abuse Hotline, I think, would help stop any potential fraud, waste, and abuse. But again, being transparent and auditing all of the county's $200 million budget, I think is the best way to be transparent that a controller can be.
Thank you. And in the way of a closing statement, is there anything else that you would like to share with the voters heading to the polls this November 5th?
Well, as I said earlier, it's an honor and a privilege for me to serve as Lackawanna County Controller. I appreciate the support I've had in the past by the taxpayers of the county. And I would greatly appreciate their continued support for another term at the County Controller's Office for myself and my staff. So I would greatly appreciate their support on Tuesday, November 5th. And thank you very much.
Thank you, Gary. We have been speaking to Gary DeBilio, running for Lackawanna County Controller. This morning, we are pleased that all five candidates for Scranton School Board are here to speak to our viewers. Scranton School District has a nine-member Board of Directors, serving four-year staggered terms. In 2017, voters elected four board members. This year, 2019, voters will elect five members to four-year terms. To run for school board in Pennsylvania, one must be a U.S. citizen, at least 18 years old, and a resident of the school district for at least one year prior to the election. Candidates will be interviewed in alphabetical order. Each interview will be approximately 12 minutes. And speaking first will be Sarah E. Cruz. Greetings, Sarah. Scranton residents are looking forward to new leadership in this school district. And residents of Scranton desperately need a dose of optimism regarding the future of the school district. Can you tell the viewers your optimistic vision and how you will push to make it a reality?
Well, as I want to say, good morning, Diana, and thank you, and to the League of Women Voters, and to the viewers, for giving me the opportunity to come here this morning and to say what my goals and vision are for this Scranton School District. So first of all, I believe the first goal is to restore faith and trust in the school district that the community has for it. And that is currently being laid by the changes in district administration and leadership, as well as by the approval and adoption of the recovery plan. And so my goal, once elected and sworn into office, is to build upon that by working cohesively with my fellow directors and other leaders in the district, by making wise decisions that are in the best interest of the students, the teachers, and the taxpayers.
Yeah, and in the short time we have, perhaps you could share how the district can and will, with your leadership, do better in terms of a number of areas, such as fulfilling the recovery plan, as you mentioned, obtaining sufficient funding, doing better with contracting, using financial resources prudently, oversight, transparency, and of course, ensuring that public education delivers for the students. That's what it's all about.
Yeah, and so all of those things are really important, and they work together in tangent. So I think our first goal is to follow the requirements and the recommendations of the recovery plan set out by the Department of Education. And then also continuing to advocate for sufficient and equitable funding by our legislators in Harrisburg. And then whatever financial resources we do receive through, from the Commonwealth, as well as the federal government, making sure that we're using those funds wisely and ensuring that they are going, that they're being allocated in the best way to where they're doing the most good. And we learn what the most good is by doing the research, by bringing in people from all facets of the district and knowing exactly where that money needs to go. And then as well as with contractors and vendors, doing fair bidding, and doing the research on them, knowing that they'll do the best work for the district as best possible. And then whatever decision that we make financially, in terms of hiring, which contractors and vendors we use, keeping the community and the taxpayers and the citizens informed of all of our decisions, making sure that everything that we do is transparent and fair, and that everything that we do is with integrity. And so all of that, if we have that foundation set, if we continue to build upon that, all of those things will work together to ensure that the over 10,000 students in the district receive the best education possible. So all those things are kind of part of a pie.
Yes, indeed. Yeah, and also important. So to wrap up, school board members are elected volunteers, unpaid for their service, to an extremely important job. Please tell us why you are running for school board and why the voters should vote for you on November 5th.
Okay. So I do encourage everybody who is watching this or listening, if you live in the city of Scranton, please go out and vote on Tuesday, November 5th. The polls will be open from 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. And so the reason why I am running for school board is because education is very important to our society, to our community. It is something that has always been instilled into me from the time that I was a small child. I am a first-generation American. My father's from Puerto Rico, my mother's from Honduras. And so they always instilled education into me, and I am a first-generation college graduate. And so it is one thing, I know that within this district, there are a high number of minority students and a high number of students who live either at or below the poverty level. And so it is one thing to have an intellectual understanding of being on the margins of being a minority, but it is a whole other thing to have that lived experience of feeling like an outsider, feeling like the other, and having to fight to, for your right to an education. And so I think that, over the summer, I met with all of the district leaders, the principals, and I was able to tour each school. And so, and then right before the semester began, I met a lot of parents and students. And so I was really able to connect with other people within the district on a more personable level. And I feel that I have a lot to bring because of my background and my personality and the strengths and talents that I have.
Thank you for sharing that perspective.
Yeah.
So thank you to Sarah for participating in this interview. We have been speaking with Sarah E. Cruz, running for Scranton School Board. Speaking next will be Catherine Fox. Greetings, Catherine.
Hello.
Scranton residents are looking forward to new leadership for the school district. And residents of Scranton desperately need a dose of optimism regarding the future of the school district. Can you share with the viewers your optimistic vision and how you will push to make it a reality?
Of course. So if people of the city want optimism, I'm definitely the one to give it to them. What benefits me is I'm on the younger side of things. I am a young professional. Most of the meetings and such that I go to, if I'm at a roundtable of 12 people, I'm the youngest by about 20 years. At first, I saw that as a flaw, but I realized as time passed that it's a really great thing that I need to take a hold of because I have new ideas, and I love to think innovatively. Optimistically is my thing. I love Scranton. I was born and raised here. I went through, West Scranton High School is where I graduated from. I graduated from the University of Scranton also, and I currently work in Scranton. I have a child who is in the school district, and I have two siblings who are currently in the district as well. My father has multiple businesses in the city also. I was raised to love Scranton. I always have, and I always will. And I've always been very optimistic of the city, no matter what the circumstances. So I know you're supposed to be realistic about things, and I certainly am, but what I'm most realistic about is what we can accomplish as a city together. Although what I'm running for is school board, it's not just about the school board. This is the city as a whole. Everybody needs to work together, and everybody can work together. And especially with this election coming up, I am so excited to see the changes that are coming in leadership and the things that, you know, we can change and really do together as a team.
Yeah, thank you. We'll talk about a few specifics in the short time we have. Perhaps you could share how the district can and will, with your leadership, do better in terms of, in many areas, such as, you don't have to speak to all of them, but like working to fulfill the recovery plan, obtaining sufficient funding, the district's contracting, using financial resources prudently, ensuring oversight of the administration, transparency of decision-making is always an important area. And certainly, ensuring the whole reason you're here is to ensure that public education delivers for the students. Would you share any thoughts on those areas?
Yes, of course. So if you are a board member and you're doing the duties of a board member, all of those things will be fulfilled. So as long as you are a trustworthy person who is thinking and making decisions with a solid mindset and following policy, all of those things will fall into place as they're supposed to. If you have a board of nine people who are following policy, they're doing the bidding contracts, they're looking at the budget, making sure that we are voting on a sound budget, curriculum, making sure we have set curriculum, all of this. If you are sitting on that board, only there for the reason that we should be, which is for the children of the city, also, which turns into the taxpayers, all of the residents, the businesses, everything is that. But if you're there for the right reasons, that's what a board is supposed to do, in all aspects. So that's what I'm really hopeful for and looking forward to, is that I think the citizens will see great change come December. The winning board members will be sworn in on December 2nd. They will sit down that day and choose committees and such. So we will, everybody, if I am lucky enough to be on the board, will see what committees they're on, you know, see what tasks they can go after and what they can do. I was very, very passionate about the recovery plan because I don't think a lot of citizens understood what it meant if we went into receivership. And I still don't think they do. And I don't think that a lot of people understand, is that we can still go into receivership. When the recovery plan was voted for, it wasn't now or never. We voted for the recovery plan, thank goodness, but we can go into receivership at any time if we're not following this plan. And that's crucial for people to understand and know. So this recovery plan is hard. It's long. A lot of people don't understand it. There is a current board member who did put a plain English version of it online, so I hope people do read that, so they can understand a little bit more of the details and the nitty-grit of it. But there's a lot of hard choices that have to be made, and unfortunately, that's just the case, no matter what, when you are in a state such as this. You can't expect it to be easy. So I'm willing to make those hard decisions, but in a proper way. So although I am not currently on the board, I have been talking with individuals about certain ways that we can dive into the recovery plan with certain partnerships in the city and such. So although I do not currently have a seat on the board, I've already been doing work towards that because I do currently sit on some boards and committees in the city already. And so what I've seen in the short period of time is that these different organizations have needs that they can each meet for each other. But they're not talking, and they're not communicating because they're doing their own thing. But if you knew that person, your person A, if you knew person B or person C had exactly what you needed, and you could all work together and help each other, why would you not do that? But the communication needs to be there, the conversations have to be had. And that's what I'm really hoping that we can do moving forward. This current project that I'm working on, I think that will really show people that this is what we have to do. Stop, look at what's around, what resources are available, what can we accomplish? So that's what I see there. And in terms of contracting and everything, it's in policy, the way we have to bid and everything. So as long as we're following policy, as we're supposed to as board members, we'll be okay on that. And in terms of spending money appropriately, I am grateful that we have this recovery plan because everyone who is successful in this election will be on the board for four years, and the recovery plan is for five years. So this is your life. You have no choice. You have to follow this, you have to, you know, go along with it. But the good thing is that if we find extra resources and extra money and extra, you know, new ways, innovative ways to do things, it's not set in stone, and it can be amended, and it can be changed. And although people, I see that views are very mixed in the city about this recovery plan. But if they understood that, you know, this is giving a structure, we have to abide by this, and the numbers are there, the data is there, it shows you what we can come out with in the end. And we all want a successful city with students who have an education, who can go on to great and better things. I have a colleague of mine who was telling me how, back where he's from, he's a very noble man and has a vast amount of knowledge and such. Where he was from, they were working alongside with the businesses and the school district and the local colleges. Because you see, what do the businesses need? What can the colleges do to fit that need? And then what can the school district do to get the kids ready for that? And it only makes sense for all resources to work together. So that's what I'm really hoping for because the city has so much to offer, but we can't keep letting people leave. You know, I was, I'm thankful enough that my family instilled into me how wonderful the city is, and I've always thought that way, I've always felt that way. But some people just don't have that passion for this area, but they can. We just have to show them what we have to offer and what we could do for them. And it's very accomplishable if everybody works together with proper leadership, skillset, and everything.
Thank you. Yes, that's so important, that communication across multiple sectors of the government. So to wrap up, school board members are elected volunteers, unpaid for their service, for an extremely important job. Please summarize again why you are running for the school board and why the voters should give you their vote on November 5th.
Sure, of course. So when I first, I put in for two appointments before the election, and I was not successful for the two, but I had very good feedback, and it felt great to know that I had that chance, I could do this. You know, I saw, I said, this is possible. So, sorry. So my daughter's in the district, she's in second grade, as I said. So I have a huge passion for the district also. When I walk into those school board meetings and I see all of my old teachers sitting in the sidelines and everything, it gives me such a good feeling, you know? They were my educators. They helped me get to where I am today. I am currently an educator myself. I work at a local college. And I have siblings in the district as well. And I, like I said, I am on a few committees and such, so I know I have the expertise and the skillset that I could put forth that would really benefit the school district. And also, I'm willing to work and to learn. I love to learn. So I'm excited to be sworn in, if I am lucky enough to be on the board, so that I can learn all of the rules and regulations, take the training that we must now take, which is fantastic, that it's required, and, you know, get to work. I am so excited for the people who are running because everybody wants to work together. You know what? I believe every person that is currently running said, if they want me, they'll take me. If not, I wasn't meant to be. So, you know, that to me tells me we have genuine people who are running, who are doing it for the right reasons, and they're hoping that the citizens see that they're doing it for the right reasons. And that's how all of us feel. So we know that we have experience that can be put forward, that we have the knowledge, we're willing to work, we have the work ethic and the commitment. So as long as the citizens want that from us, that we're willing to give it, and I'm definitely willing to give that to the city of Scranton.
Thank you. Thank you, Catherine. We have been speaking to Catherine Fox, running for Scranton School Board. Speaking next will be Roe Hume. Greetings, Roe.
Thank you, Diana.
Scranton residents are looking forward to new leadership to the Scranton School Board, and residents of Scranton desperately need a dose of optimism regarding the future of the school district. Can you tell the viewers your optimistic vision of how you will push your optimistic vision to be a reality?
Well, thank you. I think we have a lot to be optimistic about. I've spent the last few weeks visiting every school in the district, and I thank the principals and the administration for making that possible. At a building level, I have been blown away by the passion, the commitment, the total focus on the children and the students that the schools have maintained in the face of a lot of turmoil at the administrative and board level. And that is the cause for the optimism that I feel, that we are going to really take this chance of financial recovery, to emerge from financial recovery stronger and better and as a really functioning, strong school district. I cannot tell you how, in a classroom level, on a child-to-child level, how well-served we are by our principals, our teachers, and our support staff at a building level. I think the changes in the administration have put us on a path where optimism is starting to surge back through. People are seeing there is a way out, and that's the plan. I think that we have three legs to the stool of coming out of recovery in a strong position. One is definitely to continue the fight for fair funding. We have to keep the pressure on to get more money from the state for our schools because we can't keep putting the burden on the taxpayer. But that's not in our control. That's at Harrisburg level. Now, when we start to show that we are doing well, and that we're working well, and that we're doing better, I believe that we will see money flow, and should the court case in 2020 come down in our favor on fair funding, or in Wilkes-Barre's favor and the other districts, then we will see that. But we can't control that, so we just have to keep fighting, but not rely on it. I think the second leg is, we have a great recovery plan. We are blessed with Dr. Feynman. I think she is an incredibly able and compassionate person who has seen not only the need for financial recovery, but also academic recovery. And she is so focused on the kids that we can have confidence that the plan, if followed, will get us out. And I think as a board, we have to commit to following the plan. Do I think it's perfect? No, there's bits in it that I don't like at all. But it is the plan, and I think we can change it. She said, we can change and modify the plan to continue in the right direction. But we have to work together, the board, the administration, the teachers, the administrators, everyone, we need to be pulling together. We have a history in this district of the board fighting with the administration, the administration fighting with the teachers, the board not feeling they're getting information and a lack of transparency. I think that culture will end, or at least be vastly ameliorated with what we're seeing in the changes in the board and in the administration. I think we're all going to work together. Third thing is, we have to come out of this recovery, not limping, but strong. And that means that we also have to have academic recovery. For academic recovery, sadly, we are measured by our PSSA scores, which does not reflect either the teaching or the kids. I think, I'm not for standardized testing, but it's what we have, so we have to live with it. We need to start looking at, take this chance to look at, the way in which We need to start looking at, take this chance to look at, the way in which we do things, put a line through the, that's how we always used to do it, so we're going to keep doing it when it's not working, go back to basics, look at best practices, and see how we can use the recovery period to implement best practices, both academically and of course, financially.
Yes, thank you. Those are also, you know, very important points, and especially the point you're making about the necessity of delivering, that public education delivers for the students because that is what the school district is all about. Would you elaborate just a little bit more about, perhaps, what the board could do in the way of contracting and transparency?
Transparency, I think, is more of a state of mind than implementing specific rules about how you do it. We have to understand that we are in a position of public trust. I think that also implies that we have to know that we are doing it for the right reasons and that therefore, we have nothing to hide. People don't have to agree with every decision that we make, but they need the opportunity to see how we arrived at that decision. And I think that the new policies outlined in the plan, for instance, of using board docs, which will be open to the public, of more meetings and things. The main thing is, is that we are coming out of an era where the public, very rightly, has grounds to be suspicious of the motives of people at the administration. We have a couple of people who are convicted or pled guilty to offenses at the board, at the administrative level, at the board level, and this, I think, goes on, goes back. So what we need to do is say, hey, there's a new fireman in town, and we have to be open with the public about how we reach our decisions.
Thank you, yes. So to wrap up, school board members are elected volunteers, unpaid for their service for an extremely important job. Please tell us why you are running for school board and why voters should give you their vote on November 5th.
Well, you probably guessed I'm not a local. I came to Scranton seven years ago, and I've become very involved in local politics and local action because I think this is a city that is harder on itself than it needs to be. It has a great academic center, it has great medical schools, it has hospitals, it has the opportunity to rise like a phoenix, not as a coal country, but as a new, modern, technically-driven city. And a lot of people are down on it. I ran for school board because I believed that some members of the board, as it was constituted, were not acting particularly in the interest of the children. I frequently went to board meetings and sounded off. You probably guessed I do talk. My father used to say, you can stand on the sidelines and criticize the ref, but, or you get in the game, and you can't change things if you're not in the game. So I decided a week before petitions closed that I would throw my hat in the ring. I did not expect to get elected, but wanted to give people a choice. I'm very glad to have the chance to serve people.
Thank you. Thank you, Ro. We have been speaking with Ro Hume, candidate for Scranton School Board. Speaking next will be Tara Yanni. Greetings, Tara.
Hello.
Scranton residents are looking forward to new leadership on the Scranton School Board, and residents of Scranton desperately need a dose of optimism concerning the school board and the future of the school district. Can you tell viewers your vision of optimism for the district and how you will work to make that a reality?
Sure. First, I just want to say thank you to the League of Women Voters for having me here, and then I'd like to thank the voters in the primary election for giving me this opportunity. There's so much positive going on right now in the city, from the mayoral race down through city council, all the way to the school board. I feel like the city is really turning around, and it's a great opportunity that the voters have given me, and their confidence that they've shown in me, I can't say how much I appreciate it. There's a lot of good going on in the city right now, and I believe all the candidates running in all of these races are in it for the right reasons. So I look forward to being part of new growth in the city.
Thank you. In the short time we have, perhaps you could share how the district can and will do better under your leadership in various important areas, such as working to fulfill the recovery plan, obtaining sufficient funding, contracting, using financial resources prudently, ensuring oversight, transparency of decision-making, and of course, the reason that the school board is here is to ensure a quality education for our students.
Absolutely. I think this recovery plan is huge, and I brought it here just so that the viewers and you can see what's involved. I'm committed to understanding and learning this recovery plan. One thing I was hoping to, a point I was hoping to make during this time, is that had the current board not passed this recovery plan and the state were able to come in and take over and put us into receivership, we would lose Dr. Feynman, who's the recovery officer, we would lose her whole team. The state's going to take over, and they're going to slash every extracurricular activity, and our taxes could go even higher than what's listed in the recovery plan. So the fact that the current board passed this recovery plan is huge. It gives me and all of my fellow candidates who are coming onto the board an opportunity to turn this around. We can work within this plan, it's amendable. It doesn't mean that our taxes are absolutely going to go to those high indexes. There's a lot of work going on in the community regarding the fair funding initiative, I don't know if you're familiar with that, a lot of dedicated community volunteers who are working to get money. So if we can get that money from the state, money that we're, you know, we're deserving of, our students are deserving of, then I hope to be able to lessen that tax burden on our taxpayers. I'm a taxpayer. I've owned my own home for 22 years. My husband and I have worked really hard to do that. My husband and I were sitting in the kitchen, and I was reading the newspaper, and I was complaining about things going on in the school district, in the city, about our tax increases, and my husband said, well, stop complaining and do something about it. And I said, well, what am I going to do? And he said, run for school board. And I thought, how am I going to do that? I'm not politically connected, we don't have a lot of funds. And he said, but you know what, Tara, things are changing now. Give it a shot. We have nothing to lose. So here I am, and the voters have given me that opportunity. So that's a positive thing. So I'm going to commit to the voters in my community to work within this plan and try to lessen the burden on taxpayers as much as I can, and stay within it to get our school district on the right track. Because this plan also includes a lot of ways to improve our academics for our students. Both of my children are graduates of West Scranton High School. I know the quality education that's within our school district. Both of them are doing so well in college because of the teachers that they had and because of the education that they got. So this is a great way for me to pay it back. As far as transparency goes, I know that's a big buzzword going on right now. There's no reason that every single contract isn't bid out. Everyone should be. The most qualified contractor with the most reasonable bid should be awarded it. I don't have any connections, so I'm going to be looking at ways to save money within the recovery plan. So that's how I plan to do it.
Thank you. To wrap up, and you alluded to this already, school board members are elected but volunteers for, you know, unpaid for your service for an extremely important job. So please tell us why you are running for school board and why the voters should give you their vote on November 5th.
Okay. I'm running for school board because I raised my family here with my husband in West Scranton. I have two boys who are in college now. I want them to want to come back to Scranton. I want them to want to raise their families here in Scranton. So if I can be part of the recovery of the school district, I believe that's also going to be the recovery of the city. Because if people want to move into the school district to send their kids to Scranton Public Schools, then they're going to buy homes in Scranton. The city's going to go as well as the school district goes. So this is a great opportunity for me to pay it back. I don't have all the answers, I wish I did, but I can assure the voters that I'm going to work very hard to make them proud of me and to do the best I can for our city and for my community.
Thank you, Tara.
Thank you for having me.
We have been speaking with Tara Yanni, candidate for Scranton School Board. Thank you for joining us for this program of the League of Women Voters of Lackawanna County, interviewing candidates for Lackawanna County Controller and Scranton School Board.